Amen, so we are picking up there where we left off. 2 Peter 3:9 is what we're going to be looking at and a bunch of other scripture references. We only got a couple of pages left in this study. I don't know about you, but I really enjoyed going through it. But introspection and implications is where we're at, page 87. So Peter wrote here, "The Lord is not slack concerning his promise, as some count slackiness, but is long-suffering or very patient towards us." And from there it says, "Have you ever felt that the Lord was slack concerning a promise you believed he made to you?" And I've heard, I've heard people say that, make that statement, that, "Well, you know, I just really felt like this is what the Lord, or I just really felt like that was what the Lord..." But a lot of times, I think what the Lord's doing in his long-suffering is saving us, quite possibly from ourself, from what we're asking for. And, you know, but there are times when, when we can read in scriptures, people ask and ask and ask and ask and ask and ask, and God's like, "Nope." Then we ask, and God's like, "Not a good idea." We ask, and God says, "Not the best thing." We ask, and God says, "Okay, well, I'm gonna back up." And children of Israel, perfect example, we've talked about that. God had provided them a man of God to lead them, not a president, not a king, not a dictator, just a godly leader. That wasn't enough for them. But He backed up and He told them, said, "Okay, but you ain't gonna lie." And just like, you know, we look at our kids and we tell them, and we finally sometimes say, "Okay, go ahead." And God said, "Okay, go ahead. You're not gonna lie to them." And here we are, still today, 17,000 years ago, however long ago that was, and we suffering. We're suffering by following a worldly leader rather than a godly leader. So sometimes He's saving us from ourself. So why do you hold that belief in? So that is, have you ever felt the Lord was slack concerning a promise that you believed he made to you? And sometimes though, I think we're not seeking His will. I think we're seeking our own. Many times, many times, you know, there are families that, oh, man, it just breaks my heart, I wish they would get involved as a family in the church, and I think they would start to see why some of the things are happening, that are happening, and they would start seeing some of those things differently and seeing that God is trying to get their attention. I mean, you know, it's like God stubs our toe, and we say, "Ouch," we keep going. Then He hurts our foot. We say, "Man, I hurt a bit more, but I'm okay, I can still, I can still keep going." And then it gets our knee, and we're like, "Well, I'm okay, I can still handle this." And then, and then He takes our leg out, and then maybe we just, you know, and that's, that God will do that. He is trying to get our attention softly and easily, but we just keep on going. And why do we continue to hold on to those things? And in what ways might the Lord have been long-suffering towards us? Perhaps giving you time to grow spiritually, to repent of hindering sins, develop a new understanding of His promise, or develop a new ability, this is that long-suffering period, or to develop new abilities required for you to handle the fulfillment of His promise wisely, that is. So you know, His time is always perfect. I mean, you know, you look at, what's the old boy that he brought back to life? I went blank. Lasted. "Come forth," he said, right? He showed up, he was dead and already stunk. And, 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 you know, they said, "Well, Lord, well, you've just been here a few days ago. Everything's like been okay." He's like, "I'm here a long time." And they can't wrap their mind around it. We can't wrap our mind around it. When, when God stepped back and has allowed some things to happen in our lives that seemingly, maybe seemingly are horrible, but He has such great patience, and often He is waiting for us to grow, He is waiting for us to repent. Maybe there is just something, God says, "You're not there yet." And He just keeps waiting, and you're wanting to move forward, and God says, "You're not there yet." And you're like, "What is it?" And He's given us time to grow, to repent, to develop new understanding, to develop new abilities required to handle what He's promised to give you. That, you know, sometimes we need to back up and think, and man, and I thank the Lord a lot of times for His patience, for His patience and His clarity to see, because He's already been on the other side. He knows, He's seen it all. He kept us from a request that isn't or wasn't in His will. So His will, and when we looked at this morning, let's look at it again, Romans 12. Oh, Romans. And it describes His will, Romans 12:1-2. "I beseech you therefore, brethren..." So again, He's talking to Christians here. And I point that out a lot, there's so much of the Bible that is not written to a lost person, they're not going to get it, they're not going to understand it. He's talking to a saved person here. "I beseech you therefore, brethren, by the mercies of God, that you present your bodies as a living sacrifice." So, you know, are you, think about that, are you presenting your body as a living sacrifice, or are you still continuing in something that is unhealthy? Let's see, Hebrews 13:15, you don't have to turn there because I'm gonna read some more in Romans, but Hebrews 13:15, "By him therefore let us offer the sacrifice of praise to God continually; that is the fruit of our lips giving thanks to his name." That is a living sacrifice. So He says here in Romans 12:1, that you present your body a living sacrifice. See, He was a dying sacrifice. He did that. You don't have to do that. You can't do that. I mean, you can, but it's not gonna be His sacrifice. So our, our bodies should be a living sacrifice. Well, what's a living sacrifice? We looked at it over in Hebrews, but then He goes on to say here, "Holy? Is everything you're doing holy, acceptable unto God?" Well, I mean, yeah, but this, this one thing, but man, I ain't here about his own soul and so. God did not ask you about so-and-so, nowhere in here. He didn't come in, nowhere in here to say, "Brother Philip, you need to repent of Corey's sins." He said, "You need to repent of yours. You need to fix yours. And if you fix yours, might I accord with his." But a living sacrifice, holy and acceptable unto God, and He said, "It's just a reasonable service." I mean, He had to go and be beaten beyond the law's limit. He shed His blood, He bore, carried, wore all the sins of the world. He did all that. He just says, "I just need you to claim life, though. That's what you need to do." And it'd be a living sacrifice. And He takes it a little bit further, and some people say, "But, but I like doing this, and everybody does this, and I mean, everybody's okay with it, even some people in the church that do it." You know, and I hear things about, you know, preachers and preachers' wives, and, you know, we're held, we, Melissa and I, other pastors and their wives, we're held to a different accountability before God, because we have a different calling than everybody else. And then I hear things, you know, casual drinking. You may do that. I don't agree with it, but you may do that, but it is absolutely no place in a man of God standing up before His church leading. It is absolutely wrong. And the same for His wife. And, but I know preachers and preachers' wives that think that's okay. And then therefore, church members say, "Oh, well, well, brother, so-and-so's wife doesn't..." I mean, who's at a birthday party does that and seems happy to drink? I mean, it's okay. And, you know, I was talking to one of my friends up in Arkansas the other day, and he, you know, he's kind of the same. You know, I'm a teetotaler, that's what I am, was I always know, because I was a heavy drinker. But I think that if there's anything that brings any shade, any shadow on your testimony, why do it then? When it's something that's simple to not do. But that's, that's me personally. I cannot look in this scripture and tell you, "The Bible says, 'Never ever take a drink.'" It doesn't say that. It doesn't say that. But there are so many warnings about if you do and what comes from that. Many, now, there's a lot of things, there ain't a whole bunch of warnings on them, but that one there is. And again, and I've had people, I've had people in our shirt talking, "Brother Philip, that's okay. That's okay. That's, that's for you to deal with." But, but, you know, reasonable service is what you're doing. Now, this is talking to, oh, He said, "Brother," He didn't say pastors, He says, "Brother." Or what you're doing is what you're doing, holy and acceptable unto God. Think about that. Is, does it, is the appearance of being holy or acceptable unto God? You know, because the Bible actually says over in Thessalonians, I think, that even if it gives the appearance of being, He said, "Abstain from it." He says, "Get away from it." Things that are just your reasonable service, and He says, "Be not conformed to this world." Because you know what the world says? The world says it's okay to have sex outside of marriage. The world says it's okay to drink all you want. The world says it's okay to put whatever intoxicant, whatever, whatever in your body you want to, because it's your body, you could do what you want. The world says it's okay to be a mister today and miss tomorrow, but the Bible does not. The Bible, we got to keep it biblical, and we need to quit defending the world, but as long as we do, we're going to be conformed to the world. But the Bible says, "Be not conformed to the world, or be transformed by the renewing of your mind." Whatever's going in your mind is gonna affect your heart. Whatever goes in your heart's gonna affect your life. Whatever affects your life is gonna affect other people's too. Think about those things. Be not conformed to this world, but be transformed by the renewing of your mind. And when you do these things, you prove to other people what is good and acceptable and perfect will of God. I mean, would we not want, as Christians, would we not want to do these things? Would we not want to be part of the proof? Of the proof, you know what I'm saying? The proof's in the, the proof ought to be in the body of Christ. They shouldn't have to go in here, and they should see it in you. I mean, they need to go in here, absolutely, but they should see it in us. So He may be long-suffering, and I say, "All of that," so He may be long-suffering because He's given you time to grow spiritually. He's given you time to repent of hindering sins. He's given you time to develop a new understanding of His promise, and He's given you time to develop new abilities required for you to handle the fulfillment of His promise daily. And, you know, and I've talked to you about that, in my growth in the ministry, that God has given me just a little bit, and then He gave me a little bit more. And in each of those levels of little bit and little bit more, He gave me some things that were a little more difficult to deal with. Every church that I'm in, He gave me a little more, and He gave me a little more to deal with, a little more things that were a little more difficult. And I know beyond a shadow of doubt, He was developing in me a new understanding of His promise. He was developing in me new abilities that were gonna be required for me to handle the fulfillment of His promise and to handle it the way that He would have me to handle that. So His will is good, it is acceptable, and it's perfect. And what we need to focus on, so top of page 88 there, in thinking about what challenges do we face in trying to comprehend, and if you would, if you want, Philippians, look at a couple verses there, four verses. Chapter 4, verse 4 through 8, Paul's talking to the church of Philippi here. "They were having issues and concerns just like we were, we are, we do every day of our lives." And, you know, and He's trying to get them to focus on pure-living teenagers. I mean, it is commonly accepted. I know church people that even embrace it and let their children lay up with other, with their girlfriend or their boyfriend in their home and shut the door. It's not okay to lay up and have sex if you're not married. Adults too, because God says, "A man and a woman shall leave for their mother and father in clea to become one." That's for marriage. You can use all the world you want to justify it, and it's still wrong. Just think about that. God threw Paul to the church of Philippi and to us today. He gives us some things to think about. Start in verse 4, He says, first thing He says, "Rejoice in the Lord always." And He repeats it, and again I say, "Rejoice." He says, "Let your moderation or your gentleness be known unto all men. The Lord is at hand. He's coming." I'm gonna look at some of those verses in a minute. He says, "Be careful for nothing. You know, don't fret, don't worry so much, because worry then begins to break our spirit." He says, "But in everything, by prayer, suffocation, or petitions, with thanksgiving, let your requests be made known to God in the peace of God, which passes. All understanding shall keep your hearts and minds through Christ Jesus." And then He gets very specific. He says, "Fine, brethren." Because they're, they're coming up with things. I picture in my mind, you know, because they can't capture all the words. I mean, the Bible says that, that everything Jesus did and dealt with, you couldn't fit it in a book. That's what the Bible tells us. So, but there were some things going on at the church of Philippi, they were trying to justify some things that were okay in the world. And He says, "Okay." He says, "Fine, then, brethren." Again, He's talking to the church. Here's what you need to think about, about everything that's going on in your life. He says, "Is it pure?" And they go, "Hmm." He says, "Is it honest?" And they go, "Hmm." He says, "Is it just? Is it pure? Is it true? Is it lovely? Does a good report come from it?" You know, we think about things and, and say, "You know, would you want your mama seeing you do that? Or would you want your mama hearing you saying that? So does it, does it bring a good report? He said, "Does it bring virtue?" Virtue's a good thing. And He says, "If there be any praise," so these are the things you need to think of. And that goes for all of us, from little baby to senior daughter. And He said, and then Paul takes it to a whole nother level, because see, when Paul got saved, Paul changed head to toe. Now, I'm saying, is it on our side, or is it another side? You know, I think it's on ours, God, is, you know, He's God of all, or not at all. I mean, you could pretend, you put on a good old scripture shirt, have a cross on your pants, a scripture on your face, on your cleats, on your track shoes, on your basketball jersey, and that not mean a thing in the world. You actually wear that and bring shame to the Lord, because what you're doing is not true, is not honest, is not just, is not pure, it is not lovely, there is no good report, it's not virtuous, there ain't nothing about it praise-worthy. And Paul changed all over. He turned his entire life over to Christ, and He said, "Those things which you have both learned and received and heard," and He says, "and seen in me." Paul's life's ambition was to be the example. From the moment he met Jesus Christ on the road to Damascus, when he blinded him for three days, I think some of us need to be blinded for about three days, and I think we would see things much clearer. But He says, "You do these things, and then the God of peace will be with you." If you don't have any peace, maybe you need to look at some of the gauges here that Paul has laid out, and that might be why you don't have any peace. So what challenges do we face in trying to comprehend eternity? And I heard somebody say it the other day, I think it was in a video I saw, and a guy said, "Is it worth chancing eternity? Is it worth chancing eternity?" Think about that, and whatever it is, you know, we don't, we don't treasure a lot of times what He's already done. We don't treasure what He's already done. If you would look at Matthew, chapter 8, Matthew, chapter 8. So what challenges do we face in trying to comprehend eternity? Matthew 8, look at verse 25. You know, we say we believe, we say we're Christians, and we say we're following the Lord, and then, and then a storm comes. Jesus, I love the fact that just the world was falling apart far as the disciples were concerned, and Jesus is taking a nap. That's how much they follow Him. And that's how we are a lot of times. I mean, we think the world is coming to an end, and we look back, and Jesus is asleep. In verse 25 there, "And the disciples came to him and awoke him and said, 'Lord, save us.'" And I mean, here Jesus is in the boat, and he ain't got no faith whatsoever. I mean, in the boat, and they say, "Lord." And He's snoozing. I love that. He is taking a nap. And they said, "Lord, we dying." He should have, I think, if I was Jesus, I would have said, "Do I look bothered? Can I finish mine?" He wasn't, but, but he didn't do that, because, because He is a God of long-suffering. "He woke up and he said unto them, 'Why are you fearful, O ye of little faith? O ye of little faith! Then he arose, and he rebuked the winds and the sea, and there was a great calm.'" I just, I can't help but read that and laugh just a little bit. And let's look at chapter 16, verse 8-11. I mean, it makes me, it reminds me, we did, we ziplined this weekend, me and Melissa and Philip and Brittany, and I was, I didn't want to put it on, but I was pretty nervous, babe. I had not done that before, and it was quite high. I don't have any stories, that thing is reclined, but it did this at the top. And, but I wasn't, there was two girls doing it, so I was not gonna chicken out fuzzy. I got up there, and Philip, you know, he just jumped off, you know, he works on, I don't have any stories up in them old rig platforms, over, over an ocean, and he just, he just like, "Woo!" You know, he took it off, and I, my legs were starting to get a little weak, and I wasn't about that. I mean, he walked up to the edge of the thing, and I did, I leaned backwards and went down to where my feet went on first, and I, but I did it, and, but I knew I was okay. I mean, and, you know, I'm all strapped in and tied in, and this table could probably carry a tank, and I, but I went ahead and I did it, and it was, first 10 feet were bad, this pan, but after that, it was okay, because my wife had done went. So I mean, I had to do it right. But, but, you know, Jesus was with me, right? He may have pushed me a little bit, because He knew I was scared. Matthew, chapter 16, verses 8 through 11. I didn't tell Melissa how scared I kind of was, but. "Which when Jesus perceived..." So He's talking, you know, about wrong teaching and stuff here. "He perceived and he said unto them, 'O ye of little faith, why reason ye among yourselves, because you have brought no bread.'" And again, I mean, these guys have been with Jesus. We'll read through verse 11 there. He says, "When Jesus perceived, he said unto them, 'O ye of little faith, why reason ye among yourselves, because you have brought no bread.'" So they're talking negative, negative talk, naysayers, they're mollybrothers. And He says, "Do you not yet, do you still not understand, or neither remember, the five loaves?" Five loaves, that's loaves of bread, that fed, how many? 5,000. And how many baskets were leftovers? He said, "Do you not remember that? You were there." He says, "You were there." And this little old boy walked up with his little old sack lunch. I got, I think it was this little brown bag, I think, and it go, and it had a couple fishes and some little pieces of bread, you know, and I love it. I mean, he walks up and he says, "I ain't got much at all, Mr. Jesus, but it is yours." And God took that and fed 5,000 people and had some good old whipped cream bowl leftovers to put in the fridge and like most of us, letting run. Leftovers, and He said, "Do you not believe you were there in how many baskets we took up? Neither the seven loaves that fed 4,000, and how much was taken, taken up there we had leftover? And how is it that you do not understand that I spoke unto you, I spoke it to you not concerning the bread, that you should beware of the leaven?" There is, He says, "You are worried about eating, or what you're not gonna get, and not worried about the real problem, the leaven, the sin that's going on there." So a lot of times, we don't treasure what the Lord has already done and hang our hat on that. I know He's capable. I know His will's good and perfect and acceptable, and we forget, and we don't treasure and remember what He's already done. Matthew 24, this is why we have trouble with comprehending eternity, why we're not comfortable with that in a lot of cases, and it's because we've forgotten. Chapter 24, verse 42. Jesus says, "Watch." See, watch don't mean sit and do nothing, it's, it means get to work, but get your head up, you know, like a giddy. He said, "Hide in the world, and I don't know who to pick." He said, "You pick the ones that are watching." You know, they got down, they got water, a bunch of them put their head down, but they're not paying attention. The others got the water up, and the whole time, they're attentive to what's going on around them. They got the water, and they brought the water up. And He says, "There's your men. You get them, and you beat anybody." Because those, kind of like Saul, were His chosen vessels. So He says, "Watch therefore, for you know not the hour your Lord does come." And a lot of times, we, we live like He ain't never gonna come, or we sure live like He ain't gonna, He ain't seeing what we're doing. Let's look at James, chapter 4. Again, just, just that thought of, you know, we grow really impatient, and we tend to wander, you know, and of course, we know the disciples there, that, you know, He says, "Hey, I just need y'all pray for a few minutes." "Okay, guys, I'm gonna go over here." And he comes back, and what they're doing. Sound asleep. They ain't watching that thing, but I guess they was checking for cracks in their eyelids. Some people say that. James, chapter 4, verse 13. And He says, "Go to now, you that say, 'Today or tomorrow we'll go into such a city and continue there a year, and buy and sell and get gain, and whereas you know not what shall be on tomorrow.'" See, you do worldly things, you plan, like, I mean, just, you plan for all of these things, and He says, "You do, you buy, and you sell, and you get gain, and you don't know what's gonna happen tomorrow, for what is your life? It is even a vapor that appears for a little time and then vanishes away. For that you ought to say, 'If the Lord will, then we shall live and do this or that.' But now you rejoice in your boastings.'" And this is all such rejoicing is evil, and I think it's kind of like Nebuchadnezzar, you know, when he walked out, he says, "Look at all my stuff. Look at all these things that I've built. Look at all my glory." And the Lord put him on His hands and His knees, and he was like an animal. You know, this is how we, we plan for so many things, and we kind of leave the Lord out of a lot of it. That's why we can't comprehend eternity, but I don't know that we're taking it serious. So just a few verses there. The next question, "Are there specific ways in which you believe God is challenging you?" And I promise you, He is challenging you to become better prepared for His return. These are just kind of some thought-provoking things, not, not that we need to answer them, but what are you being directed by the Holy Spirit to change in your life? There's some things to think about there. What, I mean, I guarantee you, all of us, I learned at the Couples Retreat, that there are some things that I really need to change in my life, when it comes to being a husband, when it comes to being a father, when it comes to being a man. You know, there were some things that He had to have written just for me, not them other 20 men that were there. They sure were for me. Proverbs, chapter 5, or excuse me, chapter 4, verse 5 through 10, and the Bible says, "Get wisdom." And this is about, you know, God challenging us, trying to prepare us, and directing us to change things, and how are we gonna do that? Get wisdom! So that's, that's from knowledge. And get understanding. The only way we're gonna get that is to read. Forget it not. The only way that's gonna happen is we study, repetition, getting in there. Neither decline from the words in my mouth, so we gotta live it, so we gotta have the knowledge, and then with knowledge we get wisdom, and we get understanding from reading. We forget it not by studying. We decline not, we decline, we neither decline by living it. And He says, "Forsake her not," wisdom is the reference there, "and she shall preserve thee. Love her, and she shall keep thee." Wisdom is the principal theme. Therefore, get wisdom, and with all thy getting, get understanding. Exalt her, she shall promote thee, she shall bring thee to honor, when thou dost embrace her or give. She shall give to thy head an ornament of grace, a crown of glory." Little reference to salvation there. "Shall she deliver to thee here, O my son, listen," He says, "and receive mine sayings, and the years of thy life shall be many." Now turn to verse 23, same chapter there. He says, "Keep," that, that, that's a reference to, you know, to practicing, to doing, to watching, to being ready. "Keep thy heart with all diligence, for out of it are the issues of life. Put away from thee a froward mouth, perverse lips, put far." Put away from thee a froeward mouth, perverse lips, put far from thee. Let thy eyes look right on, and let thy eyelids look straight before thee," and he's, you know, "don't get distracted. Don't get distracted." Our peripheral vision is there to, you know, we kind of see things coming, and it's kind of a warning area, we know. You know, sometimes we take that for granted. That's one of the things, when my sister got brain cancer, she lost her peripheral vision completely. Didn't even know it. She started having some accidents in her vehicle. And when she finally went to the doctor and they figured out what was gone, she could see nothing. She looked, just like looking through it, like a horse. You know, but we want the horse to look forward because that's where we want him to go. She lost all her peripheral vision, and he says here in the Scriptures that, you know, we need to, you know, not get distracted. So not get distracted, you know, put away that froeward mouth, those perverse lips, let thy eyes look right on. Let thy eyelids look straight before thee, ponder the path of thy feet, and let all thy ways be established. Turn not to the right hand, nor to the left, remove thy foot from evil. Is there something in your life that you know you're doing and you know it's wrong? He says, "Get out of it. Get out of it. Stop being distracted. Stop being distracted," and, because that's a dangerous place. Let's back up to Proverbs 3, look at verse 5 through 7. Trust. Like a lot of us have a lack of trust. To, you know, sometimes we just, we just can't trust the Lord enough to pray over it, to sincerely pray over it, and then back over it, and let him happen. And that's what that word is insinuating there, is "trust the Lord with all thy heart. Lean not unto thy own understanding." That was Mary we read about this morning. Mary said, "Now, now, 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 look, Angel. It just can't happen. Yeah, you're gonna have to baby. It can't happen." And he says, "Well, it's gone." And she finally, I mean, and I have to think, and she was just a young girl. I have to think, she just finally said, "Well, okay, I'll believe you. Be it unto me," you know, and she just, she didn't understand it, she could not wrap her finite mind around it. But she trusted the Lord with all her heart, and she leaned not on her own understanding, because her thinking is, well, he's never gonna marry me. I'm gonna be an outcast. But she didn't go to those areas. She just said, "Okay, Lord. Okay." Could you imagine, though, in her table? I mean, they could have, Joseph could have had her stoned to death. And it would have been culturally absolutely okay. He could have. That's got to have run through her mind. And, but she said, "Be it unto me, Lord." Gosh, what faith. All her heart and all her understanding, and for them, "Just in all thy ways acknowledge him. When we do, he shall direct your paths." I just don't feel like I can hear the Lord anymore. Maybe you're not acknowledging in all your ways. And then he gives us that last one here, "Be not wise in thy own eyes. Fear the Lord and depart from evil." So if you're involved in something that is not of the Lord, then you're not going to hear or see the way that you need to. So if you're not striving to persistently and consistently seek the Lord and his will, you're not seeing clearly what he is showing you. Yeah, I wasn't seeing clearly. So I put glasses on, I can see a lot clearer. I used to tell the teenagers, you know, we actually went to a Bible study about putting on your God goggles, seeing things through the eyes of Scripture. And then you look at that situation and go, "Oh, I see it now. I see that God is in that, or that God was in that." So if you're not striving to persistently and consistently seek the Lord and his will, you're not seeing clearly what he's showing you. So the last thing there, or last two things, communicating the good news, how does the second coming impact our urgency to reach others for Christ? Now, again, you know, you can't make anybody get saved, you can't. But are you doing all that you can do? Are you living it before them? Are they seeing that you love the Lord with all your heart and you're not leaning on your own understanding? Are they seeing that? And the thing is, though, what we're doing, you know, what has now become probably a billion-dollar business is prepping. Prepping, you know, in time, preppers. I mean, their people have built underground silos. You think that's gonna save you? I'm telling you, it might for a little bit. But it ain't gonna save you, it may keep you there a little longer. And, but what we're doing, we're preparing for the worst rather than for the best. We need to be preparing for the best. But we are spending more time, more money, more energy, more anger on the worst than we are on the best. I mean, that's what Paul, Saul was doing in Jesus. In Jesus. We need to quit worrying so much about prepping for the end and start prepping for a new beginning. That's what we need to be, get ready for, you know, what's 2 Corinthians 5:17, we said that a bunch of times, that God makes you what? New creation. "All things," he says, "old things are past, and all comes new." Is it? Is it for you? In Revelation 21:5, let's look at that. Again, that preparing for the worst or the best, and in verse 5 of Revelation 21, he says, "And he that sat upon the throne and said, Behold, I make all things new." What we worried about preparing for the worst for? Now, we need to be reasonable, and I'm not saying just don't worry about nothing. There are some things that we need to prepare for, but ultimately, he says, "I make all things new," and he said unto me, "Right! But these words are true and faithful." Not many things that we can hang our hat on for that. Let's back up, look over here, Isaiah. 43 and 18. Says, "Remember," Isaiah, chapter 43 and 18. "Remember you not the former things, neither consider the things of old." When he stopped looking back, you know what's he say about the guy, you know, running a plow? Of course, the picture there is not a John, your tractor. I mean, they got them now, all they gotta do is, whoo, 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 and go sit in the house. And it runs the roads and does everything, they don't have to be in anymore. But back in the day, oh yeah, they got them, a friend of mine, they don't farm anymore, they retired, but before they retired, Saul's GPS run, they didn't have to get a tractor. They get everything up. Back and forth, back and forth. But that didn't work back in the day. Jesus says, "Anybody puts their hand to the plow, that was a real plow with a donkey or a mule or something pulling it, and if you turn, guess what happens? It's turning and your road is all messed up." And he says that you don't need to do that, we need to keep our focus, and what we look at, what we go about, not getting focused on the distractions. So how's the second coming impact our urgency to reach others for Christ? And the last thing there, "To what degree should news," I wrote good above it, "to what degree should good news of the second coming be part of our evangelistic message?" I mean, it's vitally important. It's vitally important. I mean, if all we're doing is teaching people to prep for the worst and not the best, which is the second coming of Christ. And, you know, we're not doing what we need to do. Let's look at a couple more verses here. And Matthew, chapter 3, verse 2 and 3. Matthew 3, verse 2 and 3. I'm telling, John is my mentor. "And say, 'Repent, ye, for the kingdom of heaven is at hand.' For this is he that was spoken of by a prophet, Isaiah. Say, the voice of one crying in the wilderness," that was a reference back to the Old Testament of one to come, "crying in the wilderness, prepare ye the way of the Lord, and make the path straight." See, John, he didn't come, he didn't have no big complex four-point sermon. He just come out and said, "You can get your life right, you're gonna behave." He said, "Repent. Jesus is on his way. He's coming." And you know, that message still holds true today. Matthew, chapter 4, verse 17. And then Jesus. So that was John, reference to John. And now Jesus, from that time, Jesus began to preach and to say, "Repent, for the kingdom of heaven is at hand." It's coming. No bones about it. It is not a secret, even though if the Lord followed some of those that call himself Christian around, it will be a secret in their life, because they not living or showing Christ. It would definitely be a secret, but it's not a secret at all. And it's the truth, Mark, chapter 1, verse 15. And Jesus is preaching here also, and he's saying, "The time is fulfilled, and the kingdom of God is at hand. Repent and believe." So what Jesus taught was to turn from your sins, that's what repenting is, and to turn to him. He says, "Repent and believe." So he's turning to something, and he's turning from something to something else, he's turning from his sin. And he's turning to the Lord, is what he's telling them to do. So to what degree should the good news of the second coming be a part of our evangelistic message? If it's not a part of our message, then we're not telling the whole message. And a lot of people justify sin. And a lot of people try to reason with sin, and you can't. Jesus didn't, Jesus won't. I mean, what happened to Jesus when he, at that moment, became sin? What he has, God might have forsaken him. See, because he couldn't look upon sin. Jesus became sin at that moment. Wore it all. Provided the way for each and every one of us to have the opportunity to be saved. So you know, you know anything and everything about Peter. But if you don't know Jesus Christ as your personal Savior, then you're gonna be a lost sinner, and you're gonna go to hell, and you can tell the people in hell about Peter. Because you ain't told anybody about Jesus, and you haven't accepted Jesus. We talked about that this morning, on the fact that, you know, there's, you know, this saying, this thing is, "Well, I believe in God." I hear a lot of people say that, "I believe in God. I'm religious. I just don't believe in going to church, or I just don't believe in, you know, I just don't like fellowship in churches, too many hypocrites in there." Well, I seen you in Walmart. You were at Chili's. You were at Market Basket. You were at the gas station, you know, them same people go to those places too. You know, we can come up with every excuse in the world. But it really comes down to one thing, have you chosen Christ, or have you not? And thank you all for being attentive and studying through verse and second, Peter with me, and looking forward to Brother Aaron and what he's gonna show us and teach us about prophecy that's been fulfilled, and looking forward to the next Bible study there. And we'll just continue to grow and develop, as Peter talked about there. So if you would stand, and we will close in prayer. Yes, ma'am. We sure will. Y'all die with us. Dear heavenly Father, we come to you, Lord. Lord, you've heard this petition. This request, Lord, that you knew it, Lord, but we're making it known, Lord, in our hearts, Lord, and we're lifting it up to you, Lord. I just pray for a special blessing upon this baby girl. Upon mom, upon dad, brothers and sisters, Lord. Lord, did you use this opportunity, Lord, to draw them closer to you? Lord, your word says that a child is a beautiful gift straight from you. Lord, we thank you for that. We lift this precious child to you, Lord. Just pray for healing. Lord, we pray for protection, strength. She'll just wrap your arms of comfort, peace, healing around. Lord, we pray for our brother William. Lord, as even tonight, as he sits and prepares mentally, emotionally, physically, Lord, to have his spine worked on. I pray for precision, perfection. And above all, in all of this, Lord, pray for your will to be done. Lord, I pray for my little sister Harley that's here with us tonight. Lord, I pray that you'll just continue to heal her and use her as you have, and thank you for that. Thank you for her mom and dad, her little brother, big brother. Lord, so many things around us you have already done. And we forget so easy, Lord, just like the disciples, you look at us and you say, "Do you not remember what I've already done in your life?" Lord, may we live thankful. Thank you, Jesus. Amen.